I should say, good morning, everyone. The hour is 11:33. I'd like to call this special meeting to order, Danville City Commission, Wednesday, October the 2nd, 2019. And welcome to our guest. Our item is the presentation on, our item and the only item on this special meeting is presentation on the proposed changes to the city zoning ordinance and discussion on those proposed changes and related policy issues. Mr. Scott, as head of staff, I'll let you take the lead from here.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Hunter and I talked briefly before the meeting. I think he wants to go through and briefly highlight or go over the proposed changes. And then I would like to, following that, review a paper that I have prepared outlining some concerns that we have with proposed changes, if our understanding may be correct.
Mr. Hunter? You've got 15 minutes.
Yeah. Okay. Well, there's 110 pages in front of you, so I'll figure that out in my head here a second. So again, you heard that City Commission, what the goal here was, is why we started the project to deal with some inconsistencies and work. Is this thing not live? Is it better?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not sure. So anyhow, to fix the ordinance and modernize it and streamline it and consolidate it and on and on. So what you have is the second phase of that process. The first one was doing the process articles and the general articles and nonconforming. And what you have is four, five, and seven. And I'm gonna try to run through that as quick as I can. But if you have any questions, you guys have had to document now for several days. If there's questions on a particular page, I'll try to address them, or you got a question about something, but I'm gonna walk you through some pages in particular. And I refer to the page numbers at the bottom. That's a new change, too, the way we're numbering the pages by article. So if I say, hey, I'm on page 4-2, that would be the number at the very bottom, as opposed to referring to section numbers on the page. So with that, I'm gonna, and again, I'm gonna try to go fairly quickly and just give you the highlights and, again, answer any questions, and then let the city comment with their concerns. So I'm gonna start on 4-1, if you've got four in front of you. And again, what you should have had in your packet is the new text that's underlined, the old text that's strike through, and then you had minutes and on and on. So I'm gonna start on four, so 4-1 is the very, pretty much first page that should be in your packet. And what 4-1 outlines, I think I just want to point out, again, we're proposing to change the district names back like they used to be before 2004. So those are the new districts and the names, the abbreviations, the things that people use every day, R1, R2, R3, et cetera. And again, one of the goals here was to be more consistent with what's across the country. I talked to someone literally yesterday, a Realtor out of Louisville. And when you say GRA or GRB, and you know this because you're in appraisal business, folks don't know what that is. What's a GRA? What's an NCC? But if you say, as soon as I said, well, GRA is kinda like R1, they knew right then. So that's where we're going, is go back to the R1, R2, R3, R4, and more streamlined naming that I think is consistent across the development world. If you turn to page, page 4-2, this is probably one of the most important pages in the whole document. And this is a conversion table. And one of the problems that exists with the ordinance today, there was no conversion table prior to 2004. So if you, if I was to ask anyone, hey, what was NCC before? There's no real definition of that without pulling the old ordinance and understanding what converted to what. Then not only that, there was a major mistake made in 2004 when they converted to R3 to NCC, and then they figured it out, whoever figured it out 11 years later, or seven years later. And then the remedy to fix that problem, that just reared its head just this past week again. What's NCC? What's NCRA? NCRB? NCRC? What rules are what? What rules are my? Right now, the current book, none of that has even been amended. So there's been several amendments from 2004 through the old ordinance, I think 17 amendments. The last big one's probably the sign ordinance in 2012. None of those were ever codified in the current book. They're just in files in the Planning Commission office, they're newspaper clippings, this was amended in whatever year. So the book itself is kind of a hodgepodge of the '04 book with the amendments, handwritten notes, post-its. There's the original book in our office that kinda lays out what's what. But if you were to open the book today, to the NCC chapter on today, it says it's a commercial district, yet it was revised in 2011 to go back to a multifamily district. That's one of the reasons we're trying to convert things and get them right. But this chart is what's possibly gonna save the day if it's passed, because it clearly lays out what we're converting, the old names to the new names. And it's a one-to-one conversion is the attempt. There's no taking, no one's losing any ability to do things. And I'll just point out on that example, GRA going to R1A, still single-family, same minimum lot size, basically the setbacks have changed. Another example, RC, that's one that just came up this week. The RC district is not in Danville, but it's scattered around out in the county. That's rural-commercial. There's some stuff out there, and how, the conversion would be going to neighborhood business. So again, small scale, small signage, less intense, and it's kinda rural-commercial becomes neighborhood. Interesting enough, neighborhood business is something we probably would use in Danville, but the rural-commercial category right now kinda sounds like it sounds, it's meant to be out in the county. But what we don't have in Danville is a small commercial district of neighborhood scale, and that actually becomes something that could be used in either district. So the conversion chart's there, and I think it's important that we note this is what would guide us into the future with old versus new. The next page, 4-4, I want to point out, something on 4-4, this is the agriculture district, and that doesn't apply to the city of Danville a whole lot on 4-4, but I think I just want to point out the format that's different. The old ordinance, you had a Chapter 5, and it laid out everything by zoning district. Now, the chapter is organized by use type. So there's agriculture, then there's single-family, then there's multifamily, then there's commercial, then there's industrial, as opposed to try to have 17 mini-chapters of each district and what you can do. A lot of things are the same, for example, in a lot of the residential categories, they're just now grouped under single-family or multifamily. So the ag district is the first one you see, and it's interesting to note the format's the same. There's a purpose and intent statement, there's a use reference, which references a use chart, there's permitted use types, there's development standards, there's signs, there's accessory structures. That's the same flow you're gonna see as we go through the whole book when we get to single-family, multifamily, commercial, industrial. It's the same kinda general layout. I do want to point one thing out in the ag district, though, on 4-5. There was a lot of discussion about lot sizes in the county. The state law says the agricultural district's a five-acre district, and ours is a one-acre district. And we cut a lot of houses out in the county on septic tanks because of that allowance. There was a lot of debate about bumping that up to five acres, pros and cons. The Planning Commission ended up coming back to 50,000 square foot. That's actually just a tad bit bigger than an acre and a quarter. And the reason we use 50,000, not just one acre or two acres, it's a nice round number, you can figure out a 50,000 square foot lot's 100 by 500, pretty easy math right there. So we bumped it up slightly. We know that still works for septic tanks, it's still really not where we want to be as a goal for the county, because we are encouraging single-family home building on one-acre lots, septic tank by septic tank at a time, which is not very conducive to the county roads and the width of those out in the county. So again, this is more of a county issue, but there was a compromise at the end to go back to the 50,000 from the five acres. There's not much else I want to point out in the ag district. So I'll jump past that, and I'll go to page 4- with single-family, which would be 4- again, I'm gonna roll through these. There's a lot of things in single-family that are brand-new, so let me get to that. Be 4-8. Again, those page numbers are at the bottom. So this is the new single-family section of Article 4. And the first thing you see is a term that says rural-residential, or RR. That is a brand-new district we currently do not have in Danville or Boil County. That is intended to be that less than one acre, right around the one acre, but not an ag lot, that's meant to be on septic tanks. So again, I guess in theory, a developer could build a one-acre subdivision out in the county. The minimum lot size is 40,000 square foot, and I'll show you that in a second. But the goal is clearly, that's a rural-style lot if someone doesn't want to build a 10-acre or 5-acre traditional agriculture lot. Just below there, you see this term that says R1A through R1C. That is our new single-family lots, and after talking with developers and builders, they like the option to have other single-family lots. Currently, the GRA lot is the only lot that you can do single-family, and really, nothing else is allowed. As soon as you move to GRB, it opens up the door to having duplexes. Yet, developers would like to do smaller, single-family lots, especially in that 8,000 square foot range, and GRA's a 10,000 square foot minimum. So what traditionally happens is you have to zone GRB, and then commit you'll do no duplexes. In fact, most of Danville is actually GRB, because that's how we did it back in the day. You would zone R2 or R3 to get the smaller lot size, even though you did single-family. You committed to a different zoning district that opened up the potential for multifamily to get the smaller lot. So now we're creating specifically smaller, single-family lots in the B and C category that give developers an option to do smaller lots, but they would obviously be single-family in nature by way of it being an R1 lot. So that kinda lays out the 1A through 1C. If you turn the page, this sort of summarizes on the bottom of 4-9, the single-family lots in this section, and it shows you the RR, the 1A, 1B, and 1C, shows you the lot sizes, a brand-new standard. We now have lot coverages by zoning district as well as setbacks. So one major change in the book is to revise the rear setbacks. We have all kinds of setback standards in the current book. There's no rhyme or reason to those, and if anyone tells you there is, I'd like to talk to them, because we literally have 30-foots, 40-foots, 10-foots, 10, 25. We have all kinds of front setbacks currently in our book, yet the development pattern is fairly consistent. I'm not sure why you'd have those various front setbacks. I mean, one of our districts allows a 10-foot front setback, and the next one right in density is 30-foot. The rears vary in 30, 25, and 40. Again, not sure why we'd want 40-foot setbacks on any side of a property unless there was some incompatible use, and we address that through additional setbacks if there are incompatible uses. But in general, a single-family subdivision, 25-foot is a typical setback, if you look at most ordinances, because that's enough room to park a car outside the garage and stay off the sidewalk or be out of the right-of-way. So a 25-foot setback works in most residential settings, and that's what we put kinda across the board there with, again, the setbacks on side and rear step-down, depending on how big the lots are. So that's all I'll say on that page, and then jump to 4-10. 4-10 is something I've heard since I've been here in two years about how we do lot coverage, how we allow setbacks to be varied. We don't really have any tools in our current book to deal with the things you see on this page, and the things you see under other standards, corner lots, areas in the floodplain, measurement of lot width, lot frontage, lot coverage, distance greater than the minimum setback, and then variable setbacks. We have no tools in our current book to allow stuff of that nature, so that's all new language to just sort of deal with those issues as they come up. Page 4-11, we do not have a parking standard currently in the ordinance, other than a parking chapter that talks about how many spaces you need. There's a gray, gray area right now in the ordinance on what the parking surfaces have to be. Are they paved? Are they gravel? Chip and seal, wood chips, dirt? What's the parking surface standard? So Item 9 that you see at the top of 4-11 actually defines a parking standard in the residential setting. Again, we're in the residential part of the book, on how much you can cover up in your front yard, as well as what the parking surface specifically can be by zoning district. The RR district allows gravel, because we're out in the county. It's not unusual to see a gravel driveway on a one-acre lot. But in the city, it's a paved, hard-surface requirement for residential development. So that's would be new language we currently don't have in the ordinance. Jumping down to signs right below it, I'm not gonna get into much detail at this point, but I want to point something out about signs. One of the objectives here was to get the sign ordinance in compliance with the Supreme Court Directive to sort of make them content-neutral. This is the way the flow of signs work, again, in single-family, multifamily. Basically says, there can be some kinda signs in single-family with a conditional use, for example, but then there's entrance signs, and then there's temporary signs. So without identifying signs by type, real estate, campaign, yard sale, van signs, whatever, we just call them temporary signs, and we say, how big? And that's it. So that's the kind of flow, the way signs is gonna work as we move through the ordinance, to say, you're allowed to have signs if you get a conditional use or specific. If they're temporary in nature, they're no bigger than four square feet, and they stay out of the right-of-way and out-of-sight distance triangles. And that's really all we say for signs. But you're gonna see the same exact language when you get to multifamily. 4-12 is kinda interesting. Accessory structures. Another major inconsistency in this community is how we let people build buildings on their Again, I'm not a fan of the current ordinance. I don't think it's fair, and I don't, and again, I'm not sure what the thought process, but I'll try to make you understand how this works when someone calls. If someone comes in and says, hey, I want to build a two-car garage, we say, well, we gotta look up your zoning, of course. Well, if you're zoning GRA, let's say you have a 10,000-square-foot, a quarter-acre, we say, you're allowed to have 40% of the footprint of the house, or 576 square feet, which is 24 by 24, that's a two-car garage, whatever's greater. So if you have a big house, you get a big garage. But if you have a smaller house, you only get the two-car garage. Yet, you might be sitting on the same-sized lot. So I could build a three-car garage, because I have more square footage under roof than you have. If you're GRB, it's the opposite. You get 25%, or 576, whatever's greater, even if that GRB lot is bigger than a GRA lot. So you basically get a two-car garage, and your neighbor gets a three-car garage. There's another provision that if you have a big backyard, you can do 25% of your backyard, which is why people are building buildings on lease on some of these other big lots, that could be as big as 6,000 square feet. It actually could be bigger than the house, because if you have a big rear yard, you get the 25% number, not the 40% number. So I just, I just referenced three different ways we make people, allow people to build garages, when they're sitting on the same-sized lot next to each other in the same neighborhood. I don't think that's fair or consistent. The way most of the communities do this, they just have a percentage of the footprint. And that's what we've gone to, to say, you get as much building out back as a percentage of your footprint, and it's just consistent with that. So if you want to buy a building at Lowe's and build a garage, or have a gazebo, it's a total cumulative of buildings not to exceed the percentage of the footprint of your house. That would be the new standard. That's fair, that's consistent, and that's used pretty much everywhere, as opposed to these specific standards that literally get people pretty upset that they don't understand why they can do what their neighbor is. This way, it's just a formula of the building, and they might get less building. But we bumped up the percentage from 50, or from 40, or 25, or less, to 75. So we're giving them a lot more building, but it's all accessory in nature and has to be behind the house. So that's a major change that you're seeing on 4-12. That number E4, 75% of the principal building, that's more consistent. That'll allow people to build four-car, or three-car garages, and still have a 10-by-10 storage building, or if they want that third, small structure, normally, they can work under that same percentage. Right now, we spend a lot of time telling people, no, they can't have these buildings, or they need to get a variance from the Board of Adjustments to, you know, put a 10-by-10 building on their property. If they've already got a two-car garage, they can't get that second building. Seems like a big change?
Yeah, seems huge to me, yeah.
Well, it's, well, if you think about it in percentage, though, and that's, that's an interesting, we can have discussion. Right now, it's 40% or 576, whatever's greater. So again, you gotta think through what size is your house. Let's just use some even math. Let's say your house was 3,000 square feet.
Okay.
And we'll use 50. 50 would be 1,500 square feet of building. Well, if you build a three-car garage, you're gonna be pretty close to 900, maybe? And if you wanted then get a 12-by-12 storage building, you're putting another 144. So that 75% of 3,000, yeah, that bumps it up there to a fairly decent number, but it gives people flexibility to have the multiple buildings. It could be bumped back to 60 or 50, but 40 doesn't work right now, typically.
This is all in single-family, though, right?
This is single-family, correct.
Yeah. I didn't see this standard five when I was going through it, but that's, it's like it's a lot of coverage on a single-family home.
Well, that's what's interesting, Commissioner, you just hit on, we now, going back to the chart, we have established, there's another number, we have established a lot coverage for the first time. So depending on your district, you gotta go back and look at the chart, there is a cap on the lot coverage. You see that on the chart right before?
4-9?
Yeah. So they work together. So there is, there is a potential you could get to 75%.
Oh, okay.
But then you're still limited by your overall lot coverage.
Okay, that helps.
Of all buildings on your property, which we don't have.
Yeah, that helps.
And so you have to work between the two, and it's just, every situation could be different.
Yeah.
The other thing that, why the lot coverage matters, is because the accessory building is, if it's detached. If you want to bump out your house, you can build as big as you want to go up to the setbacks. So you could end up covering 90% of your lot under the current ordinance today, as long as you meet the setbacks. Now, there's a lot coverage that kinda controls that, and accessory building that kinda controls those other buildings. We've not seen a problem with that. It happens more out in the county, where someone wants to build a great, big metal building, or something of that nature. So they work together.
So the 75%?
Is accessory building total, based on your footprint?
And that plus the size of my house cannot exceed the lot coverage?
Yes, sir. Yeah, and you still have to meet setbacks.
Okay.
And it's in scale, then you see the lot coverage slides with the size of the lots. Gets a little, you get a little more lot coverage when you get into multifamily or in commercial, et cetera.
Sure.
So, correct.
Okay.
The next major change is something we hear about, and Lexington's dealing with right now. If you saw this in the Herald, I actually talked to, I don't know, some reporter called me, I don't, no offense to my reporter right next to me, but I don't really keep up with who they are. It was someone from either Channel 18 or the Herald, I don't remember. But they had heard, we were doing something on accessory apartments, talking about Airbnbs, and I think Lexington's dealing with what they call granny flats or mother-in-law suites. So they called and asked me a couple of questions. 4-13 opens up the door to allow accessory apartments in single-family. Now, that's a confusing topic, because if you think about with single-family, it's one dwelling unit, one family. But there is a growing need to do mother-in-law suites, accessory apartments, but what you don't want to do is open up the Airbnb or true rental property situation and create what would be a duplex on a single-family lot. So this is an accessory apartment standard I've used before. It's another percentage, which says you can create up to 50% of the principal structure as an accessory dwelling. But the keys are, it's accessory in nature, it's limited on how it functions with access and parking, and it can be for a caretaker, a child that moves back home, an in-law. There is a need to build or allow these type of structures in single-family. Currently, what we tell people is you can't do it. You can't have a second dwelling unit on the property, so you can have a house, and you can extend your house, or you can build a garage apartment. You gotta choose whether you put bathroom and kitchen in, pick one or the other, and that's how you can get around it. But technically, you can't have a detached, contained dwelling unit, second dwelling unit in single-family, because it's a single-family district. So the accessory apartments are something that are happening. People want to do this. I think they make sense, and again, we just, the percentage is really the debate, what, how much is too much? But people are building mother-in-law suites and want to build those kinds. I just got a call yesterday from a Realtor, local Realtor, bought a property on Tuggle that's listed, and the question was, can they build an accessory apartment for their mother to live in? I said, no, not yet. If this passes, possible. The way you do it is you build the apartment, and it becomes a bedroom, no kitchen, no bathroom. You can't make it, it's not a dwelling unit till it has cooking, sleeping, eating, that makes it a dwelling. If it doesn't have all three, it's not technically a dwelling, it's just a glorified bedroom that's outside the house. So you could always do that, you just have electric, you just can't have a restroom and kitchen. But you see where they're going, they want to build an accessory apartment for the mother.
But this will allow a bathroom and kitchen in the second dwelling?
It would be a unit, could be attached to the house, could be detached from the house.
If it's in the county?
Could be a second structure. They could put a trailer behind a house, as long as it doesn't meet the 50%. It's accessory, means we don't see it. It's subordinate to the principal structure, it's gotta meet the setbacks, still gotta meet the lot coverage. But it's not unusual, and the questions that come up are the tiny homes. It's not gonna be mobile homes, it's gonna be, can I put a tiny home back behind the house somewhere? We get those questions all the time.
So in the county, if they're on a septic tank, does this percentage cover if they have to tie in?
They won't probably be allowed, they'll have to, almost all the time have to have a separate septic system. It's gonna be a bigger challenge in the county, because the health department's not gonna change it the way they allow dwelling units to function. You can't just put multiple units on one tank. If the tanks are before 86, they're not even in their database, they're gonna make you upgrade that anyhow for any even addition to the house or of that nature. So the county, there was a provision in the ag district that's similar, but the unit types would be different. But we're still in single-family here, so we're mostly in, we'd be on sewer, and this would be the standard on sewer.
So let me ask this, with this being a trend that is going to continue, as you have presented it here, does that facilitate that trend?
Yes. The problem Lexington's struggling with, why there's a big out, you saw the paper, I looked at the article after they called, was they're worried about the Airbnbs. That if they allow these units to be created, do you open up the door for more Airbnbs, what they struggle with? My answer here was, we've got it covered two ways. Number one, we've already decided the Airbnbs, the proposal, no single-family, so you can't do them in single-family. Number two, we have a strict definition of family here in our ordinance currently that will limit how many bodies and folks and relationships can happen on that property. So we're not gonna turn it into a duplex, and we're not gonna turn it into an Airbnb, because we have other rules to protect that. Lexington's approach is if we turn the units loose by type, then we're gonna just turn the Airbnb problem bigger. But we're not, we're not allowing Airbnbs in our proposal in single-family, or bed and breakfasts. So, moving on down, another interesting provision that was written, brand-new, solar panels. I got a complaint about a solar panel initially, when, first few months I got here, I've had several. They're popping up on people's properties as alternative power sources. I think that's a good thing, so the question is, how do you regulate them? Do we want them in the front yard? I mean, these things can be, look good and look bad. That's the reality. I pretty much drafted this section, just kinda off the top of my head, and read a few things. Place in Texas that gave it an attempt. Ours changed a little bit. Then I met with the gentleman that runs Wilderness out there, the solar panel company, because one of the discussions the Planning Commission got into, what about when we put them on front of houses? They tend to reflect and glare, but like the solar companies tell you, they need to face south. So if your house happens to face south, and you wanted to go solar on the roof, it'd be on the front of the house, which could be an inconvenience to your neighbor. So after talking with the solar panel folks, the first proposal said, you can't put them on the front of the house, which is what a lot of towns do. And then we deal with what's happening in the backyard with generators, and backup power sources, and wires, and gas, and that's all addressed in other language. But what he was concerned about was, well, we want to put them on the front of the house when it's facing south. So, well, how can we do that and not be a problem to the neighbor? So together, me and the gentleman out at Wilderness came up with this revised A. A became, was initially worded a different way, and we came up with the idea that we'll allow them on the front of the house, but we're gonna have to put a standard that won't cause any glare or light trespass onto the neighbor. He says with the angling and the height, that they can address that, and they are mindful of that. But, but you know, for example, if it's a one-story house, and you put a solar, and you got a two-story house across the road, it's gonna be reflecting back into the second floor of the house across the street. He said with different tinning of the panels and angle, they can guarantee that. So by putting that standard in, it says, look, you can do it, but if we get a call and the neighbor says, hey, that thing's reflecting in my house, and we're gonna go back and say, that one has to be revised. But the technology's there, people want to use them, but who would have ever thought they'd end up in front yards? They typically think, oh, in the backyards or on top of buildings, but they're being utilized in all kinda applications. We even have possibly one going out in the county that would be its own principal use, a fairly big solar panel farm. So we tried to put language in here to address it in single family, address it in ag, address it in commercial. And this is the language that sort of goes downhill, just in single family districts. So I'm gonna wrap up real quick on the next page, four dash fifteen, this is brand new, and this is confusing. And we didn't intend it to be, but it is. We're, have had a lot of discussion with some different builders about patio homes and townhomes. Everyone uses that term loosely. And the reality is, townhomes, when they're attached, can look like multifamily, feel like multifamily, be multifamily, but they could also be condos. They could also be sellable townhome. There's a difference in a townhome lot, a condo lot, and an apartment. Patio homes are even different than that. There has been a request that we look at attached, single family options for developers. So if someone was to build an attached, six townhomes together, you might look at and go, hey, those look like apartments. Why, why is that in single family? So we decided to allow the single family attached just in the R1C district. Right now, that district doesn't exist, it's brand new, so someone would have to zone to that district. And that debate could happen in a public hearing on how many units we're gonna do. But attached, single family are happening, again, all over this country, as well as townhomes that are attached that are multifamily. There's combinations that are rented leased, and, and you know, every version of condo or townhome. Uh, there's a lot of confusion, what's a townhome lot, what's a condo lot? We plotted some condo lots here recently, on Argyle, and some others are under construction. In our town right now, you have to zone multifamily to do those condo lots. Why can't you do it in single family? Because typically, they are single family. So you could use that smaller lot size and use this attached product. And what this standard does is start to lay out the party walls, the internal lot sizes of those sub-layers of a condo lot or townhome association. So that's a new product at the end of four fifteen and four sixteen. So with that, I'm gonna jump to multifamily on four nineteen, and I'm gonna go real fast through this and not spend as much time, because it's similar to single family, it's just multifamily, and I think you guys know what that is. But I wanna point out on four nineteen, the new districts, RM two that you see is our single family duplex. That is what GRB was. Very similar, still allows twin homes duplexes, still do single family at a larger lot size. RM three is what RM three used to be, then it became NCC, then it became NRCRC, then it went back to NCC. We're proposing to go back to RM three, which means residential, multifamily, three, which are three to eight units per building. Again, the scale is smaller, it's no more than eight units per building, but you could have multiple buildings on one lot, as long as you don't go through lot coverage and the density caps. Still do single family, still do duplexes in that district. RM four is a district we currently don't have, which is intended to be higher density, multifamily. We don't even have a district of that type, we just lump everything into NCC and say the word multifamily. So now there would be an expectation, if someone was to zone R three or R four, I think the neighborhood would understand the density and the number of units that could be proposed in either district. And with that, I won't talk about much more multifamily, but to point out the chart on four twenty. And that's where, just like you saw in single family, this lays out the minimum lot sizes, the setbacks, and on and on. I do wanna point out one thing, and this is brand new, and I borrowed this from my experience in Bowling Green and Warren County. Uh, for years, we struggled in a college town with a lot of apartments on, on parking, as you can imagine. And as you know, right now, our parking standard for single family is two spots. It's the same standard for multifamily. So if I was to build a duplex with three bedrooms on each side, I'm only required to put two parking spaces in for each side. So I build four parking spaces for six bedrooms. And the reality knows, if, if it's not a family, it's just three guys on one side and three ladies on the other, we're gonna have six cars on that property, yet we built four parking spaces. Our standard is two spaces across every residential scope. Even if we build apartments, you know, let's say we built sixty apartments, the standard is only two spaces per unit. It's not based on any size or bedroom. So, uh, we dealt with the same thing for years, and then we figured out, we found it somewhere else, I don't even remember where we found it. But we found out that bedroom-based parking is how you solve and scale that problem. So we've, we've shown, and I tweaked it slightly. So what you do in RM two, RM three, and RM four is you require parking spaces with guest parking built in, based on the number of bedrooms. So you know, you can look at R three right there and go to the bottom. If you're gonna build R three development, let's say you're gonna build eight, eightplexes. Well, sometimes it might be one-bedroom units, sometimes it might be two, some might be four. The parking standard is now based on the bedrooms. And the half-spaces, or that you see, that's the guest parking built in. So if you were to build ten one-bedroom apartments, that half-space gives us five guest parking spaces. And it goes kinda up the hill, and you know what, we found out it worked, it works well. Developers grumbled a little bit, because we're, we're making them build guest parking, but we're accommodating. Again, they make the decision, are they three-bedroom apartments, four-bedroom? I've seen people build five-bedroom apartments, and that's the parking standard. And it works in a gross number fashion, and if they can't achieve it, they can do shared parking, and a lot of bigger multifamilies around retail anyhow, so they can get their parking done a different way. But the bedroom-based parking is, is something I thought would work well here too, because the flat two parking spaces is obviously very dated and doesn't meet our parking standard, any multifamily setting, especially the duplexes we're building behind Kroger's right now. Some of those are three-bedroom duplexes right now, so we're building six bedrooms, and we're putting in four parking spaces. And so you know what happens with the other ones, they're in the street, and where's the guest parking? It's in the street. So with that, I'm gonna jump through the rest of the multifamily, uh, there's not much I wanna discuss here, and go to commercial on four twenty-seven. So the commercial district is really my favorite in the whole ordinance, because this is what you get a lot of questions about, you know, signs and landscaping and fast food, and what can I do where? Again, the district names have been revised, but I wanna point something out on four twenty-seven. The central business district, right now, we call the downtown. And so that's one of the name changes I thought needed to happen in general, because I think people think of the downtown differently. What is the downtown proper? It's a place, it's a destination, but as a zoning district description, it seems kinda odd to just call it downtown, because what might be downtown is someone else's idea. So central business district is what most towns use as a zoning classification. And by the way, that might match your downtown, might be a little bigger, might be a little smaller, but it's just not the word downtown. So when people call me and say, hey, I see it's DT on the map, what is that, Zone Downtown? They're like, well, that's not downtown, that's two blocks. I'm like, well, but it's, it, it's a district, and what the downtown or central business district is means, it's in the urban core of your community, and it usually has bigger buildings that can't meet setbacks, and you usually are very loose about parking, because it's downtown.
I would request that you look at the central business, business district that was outlined by the heart of Danville, if you haven't already done so, to make sure we don't get confused.
Well, what's interesting, as a zoning classification, it's a term, as ultimately where we zone and would allow that, that, that's exactly how we would figure that out, is where do we see the central business district? Because the core parts of, of the central business are zero setbacks, because we have building mass, and we weigh, we don't have a parking standard, because it's not achievable, and we want the building mass, and the other activities. And it's a mixed-use district for, for residential, office, any combination, because it's part of the core of downtown. We've created an office district, we currently don't have, we used to have an office district in the old, old ordinance, then it went away in oh-four. So again, if someone wanted to just open a real estate office, they'd actually have to zone highway, commercial, probably, and then commit or, you know, and then commit that there'll just be an office. But the office district is, obviously allows no retail, it's smaller in scale, it's very limited in signage. And if you were choosing to just do a law office or a doctor's office, we would hope they would choose OP and not go to commercial, because then that opens up a lot of other options. I think this just builds flexibility in the ordinance as people move forward. We kept the institutional campus development, which is what we put center in, spent a lot of time getting that correct. Um, and so we're gonna keep it, we're gonna eliminate some of the standards that were in the old district. And then the public district currently, we call ours semi-public, which allows lots of things, but typically, most public districts are just government. There are parks, there are schools, there are city, there are county. They're not churches, they're not hospitals, those are typically commercial in nature. But older ordinances, that's how you can easily date an ordinance, if you go to their public and you see the word hospital, you go, wow. Because most hospitals are commercial. So ours was dated, and we're cleaning that up, and the public now becomes a true public district. Turn to four twenty-eight, and there's another chart that lays out all the commercial standards. Won't get into too much on those, except we've created that neighborhood business district, which I think we would've used with the zone change that we did behind Central Tractor. We've put lot coverages across the commercial districts, we currently do not have that. So you could cover up a lot right now, corner to corner to corner. You do have a landscape requirement, but we've actually put lot coverages and landscaping, and they work together. We've set minimum lot sizes that I think are consistent with commercial. You're not gonna get many people come in and do five thousand square foot, but if you had a small operator, and I'll give you an example, our industrial business development district is a two-acre minimum, because I guess was planned to be a bigger park. If someone wanted to do a body shop or mechanic in industrial business, you gotta have two acres. Well, that's typically a small lot, six thousand, seven thousand, eight thousand square foot. We don't even have a zoning district that allows development of that pattern. And that's what small users would want, you think about going out Lebanon Road, and think about the UPS and those small, those lots are that size in their zone, but when we changed everything in oh-four, we basically made all those non-conforming, because we bumped the lot sizes up so big. I guess back then, we thought a quarter-acre lot is what should be the standard, but yet in commercial, industrial, five thousand's not unusual. That's fifty by a hundred, and you can do something pretty easily, and more, more than likely, it's gonna be bigger than that. But this sets the minimum. We've gone to setbacks of twenty-five and zeros, when commercial's next to commercial, that's typical around the state. We do have additional setbacks, if they were next to residential, they get back to having rear and side setbacks. But when it's commercial next to commercial, there's no reason to have side setbacks or rear setbacks. We want folks to maximize these lots. We've removed some height requirements in, like the highway, commercial, general business. And we'll mention that in industrial, a forty-two foot in neighborhood business, that's two and a half stories. Again, we're probably gonna be converting houses in that scenario. But in highway, commercial, for example, we have a current height requirement of sixty foot, and Walmart's taller than that right now. The Rick houses that are being built are taller than, I don't know why we've used forty-two or sixty as our height standard throughout the whole book. A hundred is more reasonable, if you, forty-two is residential, small, commercial in nature. When you get to more intense, commercial, higher multifamily developments, industrial, a hundred is a cap, if you wanna put a cap. But sixty doesn't work for almost any industrial or bigger box that's out there. What you get, like for example with Walmart, when you do sixty, you get a big box with no fake facade. You give them a little wiggle room, a Home Depot or Lowe's, and you had a standard, might put a fake facade or fake look on the front, but they're typically then gonna be about seventy-foot high, or you know, maybe sixty-eight, sixty, seventy, something of that nature.
Am I, am I missing it, or, or you don't have that in here?
We've put an NA and put no height requirement in. Again, I'm not sure what commercial we're gonna get in highway, commercial, I can't even imagine what's gonna come to a town that's gonna be taller than sixty or seventy foot, you know, we're not gonna get a lot of big boxes anymore. In the highway, commercial setting, people aren't usually going up with multi-story, but you just don't run into that problem in highway, commercial. Industrial, you will run into that problem, because they could be bigger structures. It's never gonna happen in general business, when you look at the use chart and see what you can do in general business, fast food, sit-down restaurants. I think the only thing that would come into play is a hotel. It's the only thing I could think of that would be multiple story, and by the way, the Holiday Inn, I believe right now, is over sixty foot. I, I, we have a sixty-foot cap, and it's out there, so.
Why not include that in here?
Put the sixty foot, if y'all want it, you can put it in. I, I don't, I don't know if you wanna limit the height requirement, in the highway, commercial especially.
Okay.
If someone wanted to do a six-story hotel, is there a problem with doing a six-story hotel on the bypass? Most towns would say no. General business, maybe you need a height requirement if you're worried, but we're not gonna allow those intense things to go in general business by way of the use chart. But what you've limited yourself to with the height requirement, and especially highway business, is you're going four stories is the max.
So you're recommending no cap at all? And you don't recommend that we do maybe a hundred feet?
You could, if you want. I, I've never had a problem with it. I've done more development than this town times six, and I've not had a problem with it. I can't think what goes up that tall other than a hotel in highway, commercial. Signs go up tall, but we're gonna dress those separate. Industrial's where you run into your problem, especially when it's adjacent to commercial or adjacent to residential, and they're wanting to go up eighty or a hundred foot. It's not pretty is the problem, you know? But, you know, the two tallest things I can think of, I've ever worked with, performing arts center and hotels, that's usually what, one was eighty foot, and some of them go up six, eight stories. University buildings get tall occasionally, but you know, I haven't had, I don't know what gets up there.
What? It's like five, isn't it?
It's pretty tall, but it's, it's.
No, I think it's more like eight.
Five or six.
It's zone multifamily, and in the current way we've laid the ordinance, it'd probably have to be the RM four category. And so again, a little loose on the height requirements there too. So anyhow, that's the chart, the setbacks are probably the big deal, I think, that's fairly new language. And then we're in the commercial, and I'm gonna jump to the stuff that, but before I do, I wanna point out, one district that was removed, was it this district called TND, are you all familiar with the TND district? Traditional Neighborhood Development. It was put in the two thousand and four ordinance, it's twenty-seven pages of text that have never been used. And the only property I see it was labeled on was Mr. Owen's property out there on the bypass. So I guess in theory, the idea of the TND district was to create a new town in a new location. It had grid streets, it'd be kind of a, I mean, that was a trendy thing in the late eighties, early nineties for planners, to talk about traditional neighborhood development, now they've substituted that term, mixed-use, that's what we use. So the TND district, the only TND we had in Danville was basically out there on the bypass. So the front of the bypass is highway, commercial, and then it's two hundred acres of TND that go up the hill, that I guess there was a zone change back then, and that was the suggestion. And I guess that would allow apartments or commercial or combination, single family. So we are converting that to neighborhood business, which allows all the same things, and gets rid of twenty-seven pages of text that really, in talking to Mr. Owen, I met with him down in his shop, and he, he didn't, he wasn't a fan of the district. He said that's what he was suggested to zone it to, the highway commercials was the interest in, the neighborhood, or the general commercial he's fine with. And we talked about it, but that eliminates all that TND language in the old book, that's kinda confusing. In fact, I'm flipping through it, it's, it's a lot of text that goes away, and just, we just follow the chart. So the next page I wanna point out is four dash thirty, and we start talking about landscaping. It probably starts on the page before. We've revised the landscape ordinance fairly dramatically, it's actually easier to understand. Again, the current landscape ordinance is nineteen pages long. And depending what district you're in, you might have to, you might get extra standards in the highway, commercial than another district. It's one chapter, but it was spread out through the book. We've put it in the commercial, and as you can see now, the landscape is just about three and a half pages long. The other thing about the landscape ordinance I'm curious about is the outcomes. I mean, it's been in play now for how many years, and I would ask each of you to tell me the most attractive commercial development that complied with the landscape ordinance, and the outcome is exactly what we either thought, or is a higher level in the community that you can look at and go, wow, that's, that's a cool-looking place. The two that come to my mind, someone went above the standard. But as the base standard, uh, I, I don't think it's very attractive. I'm not sure it's meeting the directive to really screen vehicle use areas. And I think the planning spacings are off to really, again, really do attractive screening. So what we've done with the revision is to simplify it, change the, change the mix of trees and shrubs, change the spacing, but focus on the vehicle use areas, that's ultimately what you're trying to screen, are cars from view sheds from commercial developments. And I'll give you a good example, the Starbucks that was built, met the landscape ordinance. I don't see a whole lot out there. The two new restaurants we got on the bypass, met the landscape. The two new restaurants we got on the bypass, met the landscape ordinance. It literally is, I have to plant three trees. It should have been a vehicle use standard that's achievable and attractive and I think changes the dynamic of your community hopefully, without being too burdensome on developers that they got to put in a hundred thousand dollars worth of landscaping every time they build a Steak and Shake or something. So I think the standard reads well. It's been watered down from when I've used before a bunch. And there's a bonding component in that still. Vehicle use areas are required internal at certain standards, external all the time. Plant materials are slightly bigger when they go in, calibers of trees, those kind of things are required to be a little more mature than what we require now. I mean, I've driven around town and seen landscape that's put in that's this tall and you would think you'd have to put a fairly more mature set of plantings in to achieve it, because eventually that never gets there. So anyhow, it may be too much, but I, I think this landscape ordinance or this style can achieve an overall community directive as far as the aesthetic look of a community. Some of the best in the state, obviously Bardstown's is pretty good. Bardstown's is really good, in fact. It might be one of the highest in the state. They also have building standards for commercial buildings, brick facade. They do some other stuff that again, bring up the architectural look of, of the commercial corridors. We're just still dealing with landscaping at this point in time. Parking's on four dash thirty-four and the parking chapter was chapter eight. And as you guys know, it was, I'm not sure how many pages it was, but our parking is achievable in basically a chart and a few paragraphs this way. Some of the changes in the chart I think are interesting. We really overbuild commercial parking lots currently in Danville. Our standard is one space for every two hundred and fifty square foot of building. That is a lot of parking that's not needed and it's evident as you drive around and look at, besides restaurants, at the retail boxes, we build way too much parking. The industry standard is one space for every four hundred square foot of building. We do two fifty, so it's too much. And so we've actually made retail or commercial one space for every four hundred, which I think works. But flipping the script there a little bit, one thing we don't achieve well here in parking in the retail, restaurant, fast food is we don't accommodate for employees. So you can go buy Cattlemen's today on a busy night and you can see them parked out on the street. Brand new restaurants that open your community are going to be busier than others, but you, right off the bat, our parking doesn't work because we don't accommodate for employees. We don't accommodate for the people standing in line with a beeper or buzzer. We basically have a standard to say, one space for every four seats. That's an old style standard. So we've put max shift type language in here, max employees, because you have to accommodate for employees. Buffalo Wings and Rings is a perfect example. When they came in, I think they said there was going to be seventy jobs or sixty jobs. I'm not sure how many employees are on max shift, but they've got to park somewhere and you don't want them parking in the street. So you got to accommodate the people that are going to be eating in the restaurant and the number of employees are on a max shift. So we've, we've put that kind of language in this parking chart. And again, we've addressed the, kind of the commercial issue, I think that's a little too broad. The other stuff related to parking, our parking standards currently, again, I've, I've never really, I've asked a couple of questions. We have a standard for parking spaces are nine by nineteen. I don't know anyone that has a standard of that nature. It's typically nine by eighteen is a typical parking space. I'm not sure where the nineteen came from. If you look at our page four dash thirty-six, when you look at parking aisles, parking spaces and distances between them, you've got six different scenarios that can happen in a parking lot and we only have two in our current book. You may have dual aisles, you may have single aisles, you may have zero, forty-five, sixty, ninety degree parking or all the above. And so this accommodate, this chart now shows all the parking degrees, all the different options. If you have single travel ways, dual travel ways, dual parking, single parking, it's now all in one chart. Basically, the travel ways are still basically eighteen to twenty feet. The spaces still achieve that nine by eighteen spacing and then with the angles. That's a complicated chart, but someone like an engineer, vantage engineer, they, they know this stuff when they design parking lots. This is kind of typically how those flow. Our ordinance doesn't.
I wonder if Kroger meets that, because that's the worst parking lot.
Well, you know, it's funny. So I, I've been doing this job thirty years, well, it was last January, I guess. And that's so easy to identify. So when I drive in and you know, when you pull in or you're backing out, you can tell right now that's not a twenty foot travel way. This is not a nineteen foot space. This isn't eight foot wide. What I've found is retailer, retailers tend to cheat when they repave or re-stripe. They can gain more parking that way, you know, the spaces change. But I think most of these, I haven't seen that they're, they're just not the right size. It's also an inspection enforcement issue from our end. If a developer's supposed to build a certain size parking, eighty spaces of that size, I think we go historic, have gone out and counted them. Did we measure them? I, I don't know. But you can clearly tell when you open your doors or you're backing out that, that it's not, you know, the travel.
But not the one that's sitting in the car for three hours, looking to get out.
You don't have to do that. There's other options.
So, so in the scenario where they have met the requirement initially.
And then re-stripe.
And then re-stripe.
Violation.
Are we enforcing that?
I hadn't really got any complaints specifically, but yeah, we could enforce it.
I think he just got one.
Well, he said Kroger's on it. No, we would. We'd go out there. I've, I've actually had it happen with a couple of churches in my prior job where they re-stripped and someone called and said, hey, they, those spaces aren't eight, nine foot anymore. I'm like, well, we'll go check. And if the gross count is still the same, they're supposed to have a hundreds, they still have a hundred, it's like, where did it change? But what typically happens, they add more parking in and the spaces are smaller. That's what happens. They just add another twenty spaces in and they re-stripe them and they're eight and a half foot, for example. That'd be a violation and we'd have to go out and tell them, hey, your parking doesn't meet the standard. That's a tricky one because there's no permit, there's nothing that really gets us out there other than the complaint. You know, if they're filing for a zoning permit or a building permit, that's the point we have an opportunity to review a site plan or look at something. That is new language too, that we put in the first phase, is we are now looking at parking lots, because right now, if you were doing just the parking lot, there was no review, there was no permit required. We actually put that into play and we have one pending right now, so we can catch just these parking lot projects to make sure, A, they're landscaped and B, they're meeting their parking requirement. Because before, the only thing that triggered the zoning permit was a building, wasn't parking. And so someone could buy a lot next door and tear down a building and put eighty spaces in, it was, it had no permit underneath it that brought us in to review the parking or landscaping.
Is there a permit required to resurface?
No, not, not through the planning commission. There may be through stormwater or some other issue, but none through us.
Should there be?
If they're just literally resealing and we're talking about resurface construction versus sealing, you know, I don't know, I've never done that or just re-striping.
But if you're going to make them do it a certain way according to.
The standard.
Standard, then it looks like you would want to follow that through and have some, something that says, if you're going to resurface or reseal.
Yeah.
You got to show us.
We're using the term paving, grading paving, new parking lots. That's where we're now catching them at the zoning permit level. So we at least can get, because we're not putting landscape in either. We're building parking lots and there's no landscape and the issue is, well, there's no permit, you can go out there and move dirt, pave it and no one's looking at it.
So why aren't we doing, why aren't we putting that in here?
That would actually need to go in Article Three that we already passed, so we'd have to take the paving down another notch and say paving or resealing, re-striping parking areas. We could catch it that way.
Well, one point of clarification, on these commercial projects, you're going to have a site development plan, correct?
Well, what he's saying is if they don't build buildings, we wouldn't. If we're just resealing a parking lot or re-striping, we don't see anything.
No, 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 but originally.
Initially.
Initially, there's going to be a site development plan that is going to mark the number of spaces that are required.
We always have that.
Right. So those are filed.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you have to stay in conformance with your development plan.
That's what I was saying to the mayor, I think it's an enforcement issue every time.
Yeah, so I don't think you need additional language because you already have the underlying documents that you could enforce.
It's enforcement.
Exactly.
You just got to go out and say, hey.
But then how do they know to enforce unless they know, A, somebody's going to resurface or, or, or reseal?
You wouldn't unless you get a complaint, just like you, just like the code.
But that's a reactive situation. Because by that time, it's already been resealed, re-stripped. What are you going to do, fine them a hundred bucks?
Or, or the other options, we could just go out and randomly keep an eye on that thing and make sure we're just standing.
I'm going to make, I'm going to make a recommendation that you, you put in there, if you're going to resurface, reseal.
Restripe.
Restripe, you need to submit.
And that's also an opportunity that if they weren't in compliance, they can get in compliance.
Well, that's interesting, the second point. Yeah, there's parking lots out there that didn't have to do landscaping back in the day when they did their site plan or the old PUD language we did years ago that clearly aren't in compliance with the new standard. It's a trigger point to come into compliance. So that, that again, would not be in four or five. I don't think Article Three is where we lay out our zoning permit, building permit requirement. And I would think we'd catch that under the zoning permit paving requirement.
Wherever you say.
Okay. That's a good point. So that's longer, I was going to take on parking, but that's good stuff. Some other stuff in parking that I want to mention on four dash thirty-seven, off-site, remote, shared parking. That's how we handle things a lot of times. That's probably how, for example, not pick on Cattlemen's, I love that place, but if their parking doesn't work, it shouldn't be in the street. There should have been a shared parking agreement or there should be an off-site, remote parking agreement. That should have been figured out ahead of time that we weren't going to meet the parking standard or there was a problem. But these are the tools that should be used by businesses when they can't meet the parking standard or they don't want to meet it. They, they'd rather, there's an opportunity to share with a church or a school or some off-site. We've got tools now in the book that allow that to happen. We don't have good language in the book to do these things, but shared parking is a way that if you can't build your eighty spaces or don't want to, you might be able to use twenty next door if it works out. This gives us clear direction on how we do that and the developers to achieve that objective. Stacking spaces on four dash thirty-six, this is just typical language. This does address these dual, and if you haven't seen them, there's now triple lane fast food restaurants. If you haven't seen those, they're coming. The stacking is getting to be a challenge in all communities for fast food and specifically some restaurant brands that it, it is maxed out, blocking doorways, blocking parking, travel ways. Parking spaces get designated that clearly can't be utilized efficiently because of stacking. These numbers that we think work, and it's not really the numbers, it's the way we allow the parking to sit underneath the stacking, is language we currently don't have in the book that's addressed by that section.
Explain, give me an example of that.
One like that? Well, well, like McDonald's, or let's say we pull in Dairy Queen, McDonald's, whichever your favorite is, and let's say they run the spaces all the way down the building and the, the preview board, menu board is at that last space. So initially, you think, well, that's the first car, two in the row, one paying, but what happens is the stacking actually works eight and they're coming back through the four parking spaces. So knowing that the stacking for, especially when you have dual or now they have menu boards and preview boards, the number that you're going to see here, a restaurant to drive through now requires five measured from the menu board. So we're not going to allow them to put parking spaces underneath that stacking lane that end up would be blocked by them. So that's five from the preview board. That doesn't include the ones that then go around the corner to the pay lanes, which, so that depending on their layout, might be twelve that they have to put in. We measure them from the pickup window right now. And we say four, five, three. And what we, the reality is you need to stack from that first stop point, really. And then I've been in some then that they almost call around the building. I don't even know how the parking functions. So the next page, four dash thirty-nine, we get into sign language. This was one of the things that was talked about a bunch. Again, there's a Supreme Court directive for communities to get their sign language, what's called content neutral. So again, the easiest rule of thumb is if you've got to read the sign to figure out the rules. For example, if I got to look at the sign and say, hey, that's a real estate sign, then I can turn to the book and say, there's the rules. The Supreme Court has said, can't have those kind of rules. So all the planning commission can do is regulate how big, how tall, how wide, where at on the ground. So the sign ordinance has been streamlined to achieve that objective. And so now there's just generic language on what requires a permit, general sign provisions. And again, it references the sign summary table and I'll explain that in a minute. Freestanding sign, wall sign, interchangeable letters. And then one thing I want to point out on four dash forty, we currently allow signs to be five foot from the edge of pavement. I've never seen that before and that measurement is typically from the outside of the sign. So back in the day, when you had all pole signs and, you know, five foot, you look up, that'll work. But if they do a monument sign, five foot from the edge of pavement is way too close for a bulky structure. So ten foot is typically what a lot of towns use to get those signs back. Pole signs don't tend to be the problem, but lower pole signs, especially monument or pylon signs are a huge problem when they're five foot from the edge of pavement. So ten foot's a better standard and it works well. The other thing, I think on the sign ordinance, if you turn on four dash forty-one, we've put a standard about signs when they're adjacent to residential. We've got some issues on Houstonville Road, I think, or, you know, the signs look good from the bypass, but in certain situations, because they have a house next door or behind them, they should have to achieve other setback requirements because of that, as well as illumination requirements in the item right below. So we don't have any language like that in the current ordinance that we'd be putting into place. Temporary signs, again, we're, we're addressing this three different ways. Temporary signs are not defined well now, other than they might be a banner or balloon without saying the word real estate or campaign or sports signs. And what we're saying is if they go on the building, you can put them on the building. Go out on the lot, it's a problem, but there's a temporary sign option that they'd have to get a permit for in a limited fashion to allow them to do something unique or with a grand opening or something on their property. The language that we have now is, is full of trip and fall hazards. And I'll give you an example. There's a perception that we can't do temporary signs in Danville, yet the language says you can't do banners. So you can talk to any sign company and go in and ask them or buy something and say, hey, I want to buy a banner or a static or a yard sign or wall sign or freestanding sign. There's different products. Our ordinance just prohibits banners out on the lot, but allows them on the building in unlimited fashion as long as you want. So what the ordinance says, you can't put a banner out on the fence, yard, but you can put it on the facade of a building. No cap on the square foot is a no timeframe. So the tire places up here probably has six banners up there, bigger than their freestanding sign have been up there the two years I've been here, which is fine. So you can't put the banner in the yard, but you can put the same old banner up on the building for five years until it looks horrible.
Now you say it's fine. Is it fine?
It does, there's no prohibition against it.
Well, I, I got that, but the exercise here is for your recommendations to come into play.
Now we're addressing it because we're saying the banners, whether they're on the building or on the lot or anywhere, now have to get a temporary sign permit, which is A, somewhat of a deterrent, to be honest about it, because those are twenty-five dollars. Are you going to go out and pay twenty-five dollars to get that ninety-nine cent Coke sign that Five Star gets for free? Or are you going to spend your twenty-five dollars on the banner you bought that means more to you? That's meant to be a deterrent. Number two, we're saying it can only be out there for thirty days, three times a year. So whether they're on the building, on the ground, wherever, we're going to limit that and permit that to try to regulate that and make it somewhat of a deterrent, but still allow the businesses flexibility. If a car dealer wants to put a special banner up for a special sale, we just want them to do it through the process. But I get a lot of complaints about temporary signs. I've got some people that drive around and literally call me and text me signs and say, hey, that one's, and I'll give you the example, it's the sale, the flag signs we're seeing. They say, that's an illegal sign on bypass. I said, well, it says they can't have banners. Well, that's a banner. No, that's a sale sign. That's a windsock, whatever you want to call it. The guys that float around, that's a violation. Show me where it's a violation in the book. It says temporary signs, banners are prohibited in all districts. So now we're just saying the word temporary signs and we say, such as banners, panels, posters, flags, fixed balloons, similar devices.[1705.65] posters, flags, fixed balloons, similar devices, again, and we use, you know, try to catch every term that could be all of those things, and then limit how many, how long, and they require a permit, so if they don't get a permit, that's a problem right there.
I remember we tried to address that the last time, we talked about sign years ago, and got a whole lot pushed back from people.
The one...
And they do whatever they want to on their building, that kind of thing, you know, but you all, y'all didn't hear any of that kind of feedback.
No, we actually went out and met with all, you know, the chamber had an event and invited all the business owners, we had a lot of, probably the biggest event we had of any event, even the planning commission hearings, and we had, um, and we had fairly good support, and I'm going to show you what's happening on the next page, which surprised me, because I figured they would push back on that. If you go to the chart on four dash forty-two, this is where all the sign language, again, our current sign ordinance is pretty big and a lot of pages, most of what's in the sign ordinance currently is right here in this chart. Um, it's hard to navigate the sign ordinance now, if someone comes into community and says, hey, what's the rules, and highway commercial, how big? I say, well, it's 30 foot, 100 square foot, unless it's a franchise sign, unless you have multiple frontages, and it's if, if, if. We're going to just the flat standard, so if we use the highway business, you get one freestanding sign, it's 128 square foot. Talk to the sign companies, they sell panels and one by twelves. Before, they have to do the goalpost style, typically a 12-foot width is what they can put on a pole, 128 is typically divisible that they sell a lot of, our standard is 100, so we're bumping up the square footage a tad bit, but we're bringing the height down six feet. Our height is 30 feet, and we're dropping it down to 24, so we're going to make the signs shorter. The new neighborhood business and central business, they get even smaller, so we bumped up the height a tad bit in the highway business, but in all other districts, the sizes come down and this, and the faces have gotten smaller. And we had nobody say they had a problem with that.
What about, as the ordinance is now, you know, a lot of places are co-branded now, like Long John's and whatever.
Yeah.
And, like, the ordinance we passed required you to have frontage on two streets, in order to do that, and we...
Yeah, well, we're, we're going with, you just get one sign per platted lot, and in that situation, we still look at the lot, so today, you could have a co-branded sign, you're under the, you still have to be on a single pole, you could have multiple panels, you just can't be over the 100 square foot. The multiple frontage lets you put two signs up, and helps a co-branded business if they have multiple frontages, but you could do a multiple branded sign on one lot, you're just sharing the same space.
Okay.
Now, another problem that we have is, is wall signs, and this, I think, addresses a big problem. Um, we say you can have 50 square foot of wall sign in one commercial district, and 64 in the other, but you can never have it on more than two walls, yet if, if you drive up and down Houstonville Road, and look at all the strip centers, and look at all the signs, I think the idea was, you can do as much wall signage on the front, but it's the second wall can't be over the 50 or 64 square, because clearly, we got more than 64 square feet. So I think there was an interpretive period that maybe someone thought, you can't have more than 64 per suite, that's why you've got 300 square foot of sign, maybe on a small strip center, when the cap is 64, I don't know, but then the next business comes in, for example, where Sears is, nutrition business, there's a third new business, they came in and said, hey, I want to put up a 64 square foot sign, I said, you can't, you guys are maxed out on the face. Well, he's got one, he's got one, I said, I don't know why, but the ordinance is very strict, 64 is the cap per wall, you can utilize two walls, so you could do the second wall. This formula is 96 square foot, or 10 percent, whatever's greater, and it's in scale with the building. Doesn't cap the number of walls, it's just a flat percentage per building, and then the landlord figures out how to allocate the 96 square foot of the 10 percent. So if the first guy gets it all, the last guy gets none. But it's very confusing, because the wall signage, as you drive around these strip centers, we clearly have more than 64 square foot on these buildings, but I guess the front was thought of, those are suites, and they each get 64. But the ordinance says 64 per building face, is what it says, and I think the word face was interpreted to mean suite. This now just says on each lot, you get this much signage. Um, won't go into any more signage, other than, we've got some language on historic districts, consolidated shopping center signs, where you can do bigger signs, if you have 100,000 square foot of building and multiple tenants, we're going to allow these kind of consolidated shopping center signs to be a little different. Um, that's on page four dash forty-five. So again, if you're, got a big shopping center, it's a threshold, you got to be zoned highway business, got to have 100,000 square foot, at least six tenants, and you can do a bigger sign, can technically be off-premise, up to 600 feet, and that's typically what you see with the shopping centers we have now, and, uh, continues that kind of trend. The next thing I want to point out is, we're creating a standard on four dash forty-six for outdoor storage, that's another very problematic issue, I think, as you look around town. How do we deal with storage on parking lots? What makes it go from a retail business look to an industrial look? This is a standard that addresses four types of outdoor storage, outdoors, type one is what stays close to your building, type two is out in the parking lot, type three is unlimited, and type four is temporary. Then we have a chart on four dash forty-seven, based on the zoning district, what kind of outdoor storage you get. So for example, if you look at the bottom of four forty-seven, and look at neighborhood business, you only get type one, which is no more than 5 percent of that lot can have stuff, and it's got to be up next to the building, like a Coke machine, or a Redbox machine, or some mulch for sale, or something. The folks that are covering up the whole parking lot with product, which was parking, just shows again, we're overbuilding parking, that's type two in nature, and we say how much of that you can do. Type three and four typically aren't going to be allowed in industrial settings, but unfortunately, we have a lot of businesses that have what I'll call type three storage, they got stuff everywhere, out back, next door, products, junk, skids stacked up, we're trying to address some of those, those issues, especially aesthetic issues in the commercial district, through an outdoor storage standard. Industrial standard's very similar, but it's looser, because it's industrial, but in our commercial zones, we don't allow this type three and four, basically, by looking at the chart. And the type three is what we're getting a bunch of out there, that happens on these lots, and again, that exempts vehicles for sale, or Halloween tents, or things, but we see parking lots get pretty cluttered up with stuff, that A, means they're not using the parking, and then B, it's just unsightly sometimes, depending on how they operate that site. Um, that's the rest of four, and I'm going to just real quick go to industrial, and I'm going to stop, because I know we need to get finished. Industrial starts on four dash fifty-one, I want to point out, we currently do not have these LI and HI categories, our only industrial category in our whole current zoning ordinance is the IBD district, which is a mixed use district, two acres in size, I, I've brought this up several times, if I wanted to open up a muffler, a body shop, and be a messy old body shop, what zoning district in Dambler can I utilize? And the only one that's really out there is highway commercial, because I guess the theory was, well, he's retail, because that's what a body shop is, but a body shop is industrial in nature, or if I'm in the mulch, or pallet collecting business, I'm industrial, but I'm not IBD, because I'm not going to build a campus environment of two acres above to be in a pallet repurposing business. We need industrial categories to catch these small things that are out there in our town. So LI and HI become light industrial service and light industrial manufacturing, small-scale tire retreading, mulch, you know, body shops, junkyards, those are industrial style uses. We don't currently have a district that that fits, we push everything into highway commercial that is clearly industrial in nature, that I see driving around, and the IBD just doesn't work, because it's too big. So this creates an industrial district, hopefully for the future, gets those kind of uses where they should be, and as people zone and move forward, neighbors would be able to understand the impacts of those. So with that, I'm going to jump to chapter five and finish up, and I'm just going to leave it really loose here on five, and tell you what this is, I don't think I have to go into much detail on chapter five. If you guys turn to five dash one, I want to just sort of tell you kind of what the format is here. Chapter five is all uses, everything that you do in your community, based on uses, you don't have to, what we just did in four is, if you need to know all the rules about commercial, you can get them in one place, you just pull those pages for commercial, but uses are different, and they vary, and they change, and what you see on five dash one now, and then turn to five dash two, and you start to see the chart, get to that.
Yeah, I like the chart, that's good.
The chart now mean, is real simple, the use categories are on the left, the page numbers are next, the specific use types are inside them, the zoning districts are across the top, and a P means you can do it by right, a P with an asterisk means that you can do it, but there's other rules right behind it somewhere in this chapter, a C means you need a conditional use, C with an asterisk means you have a conditional use with standards, and no P or C in that box means it's not allowed. That's referenced on chap five one, and then the chart lays all the uses out, as you go down the hill, um, we've created new things for craft beverages with a restaurant, craft beverages, or distilleries in the industrial setting, we've created standards for indoor firing ranges and outdoor firing ranges, um, retail sales and services, uh, has a lot of stuff, we've created a standard for crematoriums, burial-related services, when they're accessory to a funeral home, they're different than when they're standalone, um, wind and solar power plants, we tweaked the pipeline language, you guys probably read about that in the paper, first, under pretty strong objection, but once we got Tom Fitzgerald to come in and explain where we were going, but to make this stricter, I think we got 100 percent support on the pipeline language. So the chart lays out all the uses, and then the language behind it lays out the standards, the examples, what could be accessory, and if it is a specific use standard, the rules that go with that. So five is just kind of everything that you can think of that might end up in a community, hopefully is in this chart, and if it's not, there's a way we address that, too, on five one. So I won't go into chapter five, it's just more, you can read it and read the standards, there's a lot of language, we've even, in the residential, created somewhat of a small-scale leash law for the county, I don't know if you picked up on that in the residential setting, um, there's been some discussion about dogs, and, and I've used this before, so I'm going to run it by fiscal court, and they've seen it, but in the residential setting, we talk about in subdivisions only, platted, zoned subdivisions, I'm not ever going to tell people on the ag property what to do, um, or even one acre property, but if it's a platted residential subdivision, we basically said how you're supposed to keep your animals on your property, and this accessory structures that go with that. So it's, again, keeping domestic pets on property in zoned residential subdivisions is in this section, too, it doesn't apply to you guys, that's something the county has brought up, they wanted us to try to address.
I got a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Steve, this is sort of self-serving, but on the, um, home offices, it says no signage.
Yep.
I've had my home office forever, and I've got a little sign on the...
All right. Well, you grandfathered in, so that, hey, that's a good catch right there, so, right now, on four, five dash seven, one of the specific use standards, the home office that are allowed to do by right, basically no product for sale, no customers, no signage, it just looks like you live in your house and there happens to be an office. Um, that's one style of standard. The second style down there, on five dash eight, home occupations, need a conditional use, and are these things in nature, you know, academic tutoring, music lessons, catering, childcare, sewing, personal services, family oriented, or owned and operated limited contractor services, hobby making, most of these are going to happen out in the county. Those then have the rules below them, can do some signage, can have some product, there's just the things that go with them, but that first home office by right, pretty much makes it look like you're invisible, you're just a web-based business, you're an accountant, and it does not allow any signage. Now, if you already have signage, or you're in a service that they require you to have some kind of identifier, but the goal here is to let people use these home-based business, we, you know, there's a lot of discussion, what can they do? Um, and again, if it's a web-based business, or just drop shipping product from A to B, what do we care if they're using their property as a home-based business, it just needs to look like a house. So we did not open up any signage in that scenario, so it stays residential in character. The category B is the one you get a conditional use permit, and you're more intense, you've probably got customers, maybe product, maybe signage, but you got rules on how that operates to the scale.
Okay.
So I'm going to wrap up with that, unless you guys, I know that's a lot, I tried to go fast, there's a lot there, we may need to have another session, if that's what you all want to do. Uh, the city's got some comments, and I have a one o'clock meeting in another room, so I'm going to stick around.
So do we.
So, so do you all, so I'll stop there, unless you guys have any questions.
Any questions?
Take another, another meet is probably a good idea.
That's fine.
So...
Yeah, I, I think I'd like to absorb all of this, some more, and have another workshop set.
Let me ask the, uh, let me ask the commission, uh, with input from staff, we want to take a, well, we have to end this meeting before we can go into the next meeting, uh, do you want to do that, kind of turn the switch, or do you want to take, uh, can we take a break and grab lunch?
I would suggest you end this meeting, take a break, and then convene the new...
Does that suit you all?
No, could we just, we're going to set another meeting sometime, we'll just do that via...
Let me, let me comment very briefly, that this information presented by Mr. Hunter was very useful and informative today, and I appreciate that, the planning and zoning commission, and Steve has been working probably for a year or more in reviewing our existing planning and zoning ordinance and related procedures, so this is helpful. It's a lot to absorb at one time, I do have some concerns or questions that have outlined today, and I would like to go over those at our next meeting, um, so, but we don't have time to do that today, so...
Well, then...
And, and also, let's, let's be mindful of the fact that we have, we have a clock running, and we have less than 60 days to either approve or reject this. Now, we obviously have some elements, we're nine to start, but the clock started in twenty, August 28th, so we've got less than 60 left, and so the question becomes, can we be certain that we are all in accord with the recommendations, and that those chapters, as, as quickly summarized today, will in fact mesh well together in the new document, or is there the possibility of adopting sort of chapter by chapter, with the sign ordinance being probably the most pressing need, as we're out of compliance with the Supreme Court ruling? And so I'm, I'm suggesting for your consideration that perhaps, uh, if that is workable with you and, and the fiscal court, or some process, that we might agree on some elements, but perhaps not all in one full, full swoop, if, unless you reach a different conclusion, that you're good with everything that's recommended. You may not know that until after hearing our second workshop and so forth, clearly, we're not intending to take action today, though.
Uh, do you want to go ahead and set a second meeting date? Or do you want to defer that to e, to email?
Given the complexity of our meeting calendars...
Yeah.
For the next month or so, let me attempt to do that and coordinate that, and I'll talk to Mr. Hunter, too, regarding his availability, and try to just send out, uh, that and...
What if we attempt to put it prior to our meeting on the 14th, like, say, at four We are meeting that day, right, even though it's Columbus Day?
Commission meeting, yes.
Yes, commission.
That's, that, that works for me.
That would be the fastest and, and simplest suggestion right now. Monday, the 14th, we have a commission meeting.
That is probably the best date coming up, actually, uh, so by agreement, we could just try to do that at, uh, three o'clock or something that day, or...
Can we make it four?
Four.
Four.
Does that work, does that work for you?
Four o'clock.
Okay, do I hear a motion, we adjourn this meeting?
We'll move.
Motion of second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion.
Make a move, we eat.
Uh, let's take...